Good evening. I'd like to welcome all of you in the audience and all of our candidates for the Board of Education. I'd like to thank the Community Media Center, the Carroll County Times, WTTR for being so supportive in getting this information out to the community. My name is Claudia Lewis. I'm the president of the Carroll County League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters was formed in 1920 as a result of women having access to the vote. And their purpose and their mission is to keep citizens informed on public policy that will be important for them. And certainly, nothing is more important to us in Carroll County than our education system. We are nonpartisan, encourage active and informed participation. We will hear from the candidates that are vying for the Board of Education this evening. Mr. Larry Fritz, who is retired member of Carroll County's community, an active beekeeper and an amazing advisor for the Boy Scouts Venturing Crew, and I am told politically conservative. We'll be introducing our candidates and explaining the rules of the forum. So, Mr. Fritz.
Thank you. I'll read the rules. The moderator will introduce each of the candidates. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. Following the introductions, a moderator will ask the first question. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to answer the question. All candidates will answer the identical question. There will be no debate. This is an informational forum. At the conclusion of the question period, before the ending of the forum for the evening, each candidate will have two minutes for a summary statement. The League of Women Voters will be timing the responses and will use cue cards and a bell to signal the remaining time. The timekeeper shall ring a bell two to three seconds after the final stop signal is given, and the moderator shall immediately interrupt the candidate and discontinue the statement or answer. At that time, the microphone will be silenced. The questions will be selected from those submitted in advance to the Carroll County Times, the Community Media Center, local league members, and from tonight's live audience. In addition, viewers from our live streaming program can submit questions during tonight's broadcast via Twitter at hashtag #CarrollCo2014. So that's #theworldcarroll and then CO2014. Tonight's forum is being recorded, so we ask that everyone please turn off their cellphones and that attendees refrain from applause or making noise during the forum or doing anything visible or audible to express support or opposition to any candidate during the forum. Let's begin. Let's start at the bottom of the alphabet and work this way, and then we'll go the other way and start the questions. So, Mr. Devon Rothschild.
I'm a Mrs.'s.
Miss, excuse me.
That's all right. I want to thank each of you for being here tonight, and also, I want to thank our hosts, the Carroll County Times, WTTR, the Carroll Media Center, and the League of Women Voters. I'm Devon Rothschild, and I hope to tell you everything you need to know about me and a candidate in the next two minutes. So we'll see if I can do it. I'm a parent with young children in our school system, and as such, I am very invested in keeping our schools incredible. I'm directly involved in our school system as a classroom volunteer, an active member of our PTA, a substitute teacher, and a committee member. This involvement will allow me to make informed decisions on behalf of our students and our staff, and I also believe it is one of the reasons that I was endorsed by teachers in this county. As a parent, I have collaborated with our commissioners over the past several budget cycles and will continue to work with them to determine a long-term plan for funding education. I will work towards efficiency throughout our school system while prioritizing our resource needs and ensuring these resources make it into our classrooms. I support local control of our schools and will work to address the issues that have arisen with the implementation of Common Core. I will also tackle other issues that need to be attended to, such as improving salaries for our teachers, increasing parental involvement opportunities, and improving communication system-wide. I am running for the Board of Education so that I can continue to advocate for the success of each child who attends our schools, as well as the best interests of our staff, families, and community. My passion, my knowledge, and my involvement in our school system make me an ideal candidate. Student success will always be my number-one priority, and my decisions as a Board of Ed member will be based on what is best for our students. Please give me, Devon Rothschild, your vote in the June 24th election so that I may be a voice for every student in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Devon. Mr. Jim Roonik.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jim Roonik, and I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having us here this evening. This Board of Education has received more press in recent weeks than it probably ever has, and this is a good thing because it helps us to shed light on the day-to-day operations of the Board. We have heard much information in those recent weeks on the many difficulties confronting the Board and the many decisions that it will have been making shortly. Some of the information is indisputable, some of it is up for debate. But one thing is certainly true, and that is that student enrollment is declining. Student enrollment has been declining four out of the last five years, in fact, it's been nine out of the last 10 years. The good news, though, is funding per student has been increasing. However, there's a taxpayer problem affiliated with that, and that is primarily because of Common Core that has put an exorbitant debt upon the citizens of Carroll County. Now, with this reality serengeth in the face, that is, being decreasing enrollment with limited funding, we must always keep in focus the priorities that this Board has. And those priorities are that our number-one responsibility is to the students of this county, whether they be public school, charter school, home schooled, religious schooled, it doesn't matter. We're responsible for the educational excellence of all the students. Our second responsibility is to the teachers. Our third is to the parents and the families of the students. And our fourth is to the taxpayers who pay the bills. The more money that the Board of Education gets is the less money that the taxpayers can spend in stimulating the economy so that we have a vibrant economy that is able to employ our students upon their graduation. So any and all discussion that we carry about tonight should be looked at through that lens, and that is that we shed some light on the possible improvements that can ensure the educational excellence of all students in Carroll County. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Charles Bud Nason.
Actually, it's just Bud. First, thanks to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and giving you the opportunity to get to know us a little bit better. Given that our responses can only be no more than one and a half minutes, we're only going to be able to scratch the surface on some of these things this evening, so I suggest you also would visit our websites afterwards. Mine is budnation4schoolboard, pretty simply, but I can remember it. Now, there's a piece of housekeeping I can't ignore. In all my organizations, we always say the pledge. May I be allowed to lead the pledge?
Thank you, Bud.
May I be allowed to lead the pledge? I have two minutes. I don't have any problem giving up some of that time to say the pledge.
Obviously.
Okay. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Give a quick cheer. In what little bit of time is remaining, I want to remind you that school board doesn't merely oversee school curricula. The job includes good stewardship of taxpayer dollars, seeing that students and teachers are physically safe, that they're housed in appropriate facilities, that they're provided the tools they need to succeed, and that all students learn and master those subjects they need to be truly ready to move on to college, career, whatever. No longer can we do business as usual. Now we have to do business smarter. Strong budgeting and management skills, true cost-benefit analyses, and better future planning. We have an obligation to see that students are taught properly and their teachers are paid fairly. That's what self-governing is all about, isn't it? Thank you.
Thank you, Bud. Mr. Bob Lord.
I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters. My name is Bob Lord, and my wife and I live in Gamper. I'm a stay-at-home dad, and I'm a small business owner. I'm the parent of three public schoolchildren, one graduated and two still enrolled. And because I have a stake in the outcome of our education system, I'm also a candidate for the Board of Education. As a parent of two children near Ted and Carroll County Public Schools, I realize firsthand the value of parental and community involvement. I believe that a successful education system needs open dialogue between families, community, and educators. It's why I'm active in Carroll County Public Schools in just about every way a parent can be, volunteering in our children's classroom, working on the PTA, and serving as a parent guide to help parents navigate the school system. I'm also active on the Community Advisory Council and founder of Carroll Values Education, a parental group promoting quality education in Carroll County. Our schools are critical to the quality of life in Carroll County, and we must work together to maintain and improve one of our strongest assets. We must foster and encourage partnership through open communication to all the stakeholders by holding open meetings, community events, and by actively pursuing community input. We must support our teachers with regular step increases, raises, and effective professional development. We must continue to focus on the three factors that make our school system such an asset to our county: great families who are interested and active in their children's education, great educators who continue to do their best no matter what, and a community that supports appropriate funding for our school system. Education is nonpartisan. Education is about our communities.
Thank you, Bob. Mrs. Mary Kowalski.
Yes, thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this. My name is Mary Kowalski. I was born and raised in Carroll County, seen a lot of changes over the years. I have a master's degree in elementary education from McDaniel College. I have a daughter who attends public high school, and I also work in the Carroll County Public School System. And I've seen so many things in the school system from the inside that deeply trouble me, and that has caused me to run for office. The number-one issue, of course, that I think everyone, teachers, school staff, parents, taxpayers, are concerned about is the budget. What is going on with the budget? Our teachers have not had a step increase, to my knowledge, for four or five years. They have not had a pay raise, to my knowledge, for something like four or five years. Morale is very low as they look at Prince George's County, Howard County, so they're wondering what is going on. I'd like to talk a little bit about what's going on and what I think. I think there's been very poor fiscal planning with decisions on renovation of buildings, new buildings, and I'll talk about that during the debate more. In addition, I think we need to cut the superintendent position salary by 50%. My understanding is it's something like $185,000, maybe in that ballpark. Close to $200,000 salary for a superintendent is unconscionable, and we, as a Board of Ed, need to send a strong message that the Board of Ed leads by example. When they're talking about cutting 28 positions, let's start by leading example. In addition, we have numerous superfluous positions at central office. They do not need to be there. Office of media consultant, often the office of, goodness, I'll go into that. We also need to, if we have 40% of Manchester Valley that's not being used, let's get central office in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Mrs. Virginia Harrison.
My name is Virginia Harrison, and I'm a candidate for the Carroll County Public School Board of Education. I've lived in Sykesville, Maryland for 36 years, married with two adult children. I worked for the FBI, Federal Bureau of Investigation. I have a small, home-based business called Dressing by Virginia. I've held many leadership roles in our community, such as the Carroll County Human Relations Commission, the Carroll County Department of Social Service, the Carroll County Board of the United Way Community Partnership, Carroll County Community College Educational Foundation, the Local Management Board, and currently, I am the president of the Carroll County Public School Board of Education. My commitment's to support every effort to raise every salary to an acceptable level. Teachers' salaries are not competitive and significantly lower than our surrounding counties. If we are to maintain our educational standard and achieve our goals with highly qualified teachers, we must increase salaries. As the Common Core curriculum become fully implemented by 2015, my commitment is to support every effort to ensure that our students continue to achieve through a rigorous, clearly-articulated and aligned instructional program implemented in an atmosphere of trust, mutual respect, and safety. I believe that continuing to strengthen communication and understanding will help foster better relationships between all the partners across the county. And I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the Media Center and the Carroll County Times. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. Mr. George Harmoni.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank also the League of Women Voters, and I'd like to thank the Carroll Media Center for hosting this. My name is George Harmoni, and I'm the candidate for Board of Education. I come out tonight not as a politician, but as an American, a veterinarian, a 24-year citizen of Carroll County, but most of all, I come out tonight as a concerned parent. This is probably the most important election for Board of Education that we will see for a long time. Our country is at a crossroads and our county in education, and there are distinct divisions among the candidates. You, as teachers, parents, citizens, and taxpayers, will be given the choice between locally-controlled schools with proven, successful, traditional values that encourage our children to become American citizens, or you'll be given the choice between government-run schools that will isolate our parents from their children's education and encourage our children to become global citizens, and will also burden our taxpayers millions of dollars. The Carroll County Public School System and the Board of Education has gotten off the path of high academic achievement and is pushing full steam ahead down the path of government-controlled curriculum called Common Core, even though 75% of the taxpayers in this county voted against it, and with good reason. Common Core is a huge threat to the academic future of this county. It offers a lower quality of education at a much higher price to the taxpayer. Teachers will be teaching from government scripts. I don't want this, the parents don't want this, most of the teachers don't want this, and the people of Carroll County don't want this. We want the best education possible for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Mr. Gary Desper.
Good evening, and I'd like to give my thanks also to the League of Women Voters and the Carroll County Times and the Carroll Media Center for hosting this event this evening. I want to help you understand who I am as a candidate. First and foremost, I'm a family man. I'm married to the former Chantel Muncie, and together, we have four beautiful children, the oldest of which is 10 years old, and the youngest of which has turned nine months today. Her name is Caroline. Many of you may know her story last summer that was run in Carroll Magazine. She was born 14 weeks premature while we were on vacation in Virginia Beach. She's doing well, and I'm happy to report that to you. I, too, believe that it's important that the Board of Education be made up of parents who have children that attend our public schools. Currently, two of our children attend Freedom Elementary, one in 4th grade and one in 1st grade, and the other two will eventually come into the school system when they're the appropriate age. So we will be involved in Carroll County Public Schools for many years to come. Since our oldest started kindergarten several years ago, I have been involved as a volunteer in the school system. I have also participated in mock interviews at South Carroll High School, and I've been accepted a high school intern from South Carroll High School. I've also provided scholarships from my office. I'm a local attorney who has an office on North Court Street, six doors down, from the school board building. One of the things that I'm committed to is being a mentor and helping others with education and paying it forward. And if I'm elected, I will make a commitment to give half of what I earn in pay and serving on the Board back in scholarships to students. This is not a political office. Education is something that affects all of us, and we need to work together as a team, regardless of our political affiliation, our race, gender, what have you, because at the end of the day, education is our future, and we need to make the appropriate investment in it.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, we'll start with the questions now, and as I said, we'll go in the reverse order. So, Mr. Desper, you get to start, and I think this will be a pretty easy one for you. Do your children attend Carroll County Public Schools, and if not, why not?
Yes, they do, and I'm proud to say they do. Public education is something that I love and firmly believe in and am committed to. I like to tell the story, if you know me. I come from a very blue-collar, hard-working, salt-of-the-earth family. My father only has a 10th-grade education. He did later go on to obtain a GED in his adulthood. His mother only had a 1st-grade education. She never learned how to read or write, never had a driver's license, never had a bank account. So for me to have grown up and finished high school and to have gone to college and obtained a law degree, education was instilled in me at a very young age how important that was. When I was 16, I had an employer ask me what I wanted to be, and when I told an employer that I wanted to be an attorney, he said, "Don't you go to public school." And I said, "Well, yes, I do." And he says, "Well, you need to tell your parents to get you into private school right away. You'll never become an attorney if you're going to public school." That made me angry. I wish I could find that man today because I'd say, "Look at me now." I'm here to tell you that with hard work, with goals and hard work, you can live the American dream and become whatever you want to be. So even though I'm an attorney, I would not send my kids to private school. One of the wonderful things of living here in Carroll County is our public school system. That's one of the greatest assets that we have here, and I believe in our public school system, and I'm committed to helping it stay on its path to be a great system.
Thank you. Same question, Mr. Harmoni.
Thank you. I have an 11-year-old daughter, and she happens to be actually a sports star for her age. She plays two grades up with the 13-year-olds. She plays with all the public schoolchildren on the teams. She goes to St. John's for the reason that we chose Christian-based education initially for her confirmation and her first communion. However, under Maryland law, the school board is charged with seeing that every schoolchild in Carroll County is properly taught and properly prepared to move on to their next step in life. It doesn't matter whether they go to private, parochial, or public school, they're still under the watchful eye of the Board of Education. So I'm not only concerned just about the parochial children, I'm also concerned about the public schoolchildren, I'm concerned about the private schoolchildren, and the parochial schoolchildren, that they all have the opportunity, the same opportunity, for the education in this county. And that's all I have to say, but thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Harrison.
Well, no, I don't have any kids in Carroll County Public School because my kids are adults, and they've finished college, masters, so on and so forth. But I tell you, I do know what it takes to raise a child and what you have to do to have successful children. I've seen it. And I have always been involved with the school system. As a matter of fact, I was chair of the Human Relations Commission, and we partnered with the school system years ago. We started the multicultural leadership conference that's going on in the school system still today. I've worked, when parents glen'd in and mandated multicultural education in the state of Maryland, I was asked to be on that committee, and we wrote the first five-year plan for multicultural education, and we also wrote the second five-year multicultural education, and now it's called the Multicultural Council that's still going on today. I belong to the Rotary Club, and we give, I think it's three or four scholarships a year to our Carroll County Public School students, so I'm committed to education.
Thank you. Mrs. Kowalski.
Yes, thank you. Do your kids attend public school? Yes, I have one child, and she does attend public high school. However, she did attend private school, Catholic elementary, and middle school. So I'm one of those people that kind of have a mix with my daughter, as well as myself. I attended, I grew up in Carroll County, attended a mix of Catholic and public school, and I think that's a good experience, it's been a good experience for me and for my children, the choice that we've made in our family. However, I want to say that I, as a parent, my experience with my daughter in public high school has given me great concern about some things I see happening in public high school, that I am very concerned that there is developing a hostile environment to people of faith, to families of faith. For example, my daughter, in one of her social studies class, a video of the Miley Cyrus Dance performance, very obscene, I think, was shown to the entire class. I thought this was horrendous. My daughter didn't tell me until months later that it had happened because an assistant principal apparently had been standing in the back of the classroom, so my daughter figured it must not be anything wrong with it. This kind of thing violates the principles not only of Christians, but of every, I think, decent-thinking individual. And the reason justification was that they said it was not obscene because it was shown on national television. That is appalling and must stop.
Thank you. Mr. Lord.
Yes, as I stated earlier, I have three children that attended public school. One graduated, she's 26-years-old, very proud of her. She just got married. And I have two younger children, good at elementary school. You know, as a parent, I think it's my job, my duty, to get involved in their education. I'm there just about every week, and I love our public school system. My wife and I, when we got married, we knew we wanted to start a family. She lived here in Carroll County, and we weighed our options. We picked Carroll County based on the education system, and I'm proud to say several times that my children attend Carroll County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nason.
Of our four daughters, the two youngest ones attended and graduated from Key. They enjoyed it. They learned a lot. The other two were ahead of them, and then went their separate ways. All our daughters are now grown. Most of my grandchildren go to school out-of-state. I have one in-state. So in some sense, you might think I don't have a whole lot of contact with the school system, but that's not really true because I'm watching each of them as they move along in their education process, and it's important to me that today's generation of kids get the same opportunities that my kids' generations had and took advantage of. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rothschild.
Do you want to skip Mr. Roonik?
Oh, excuse me. No, I don't.
I could take his time if you want.
Thank you, Devon. I'm the father of three grown children, all three that graduated from South Carroll High School, all three gainfully employed. Just very recently, last Thursday, we were blessed with twin grandsons, which now gives us three, and it breaks my heart to realize that the educational system that's now going on in this country, especially in this state, under Common Core, is what they're going to be exposed to in a matter of years, and that's what prompted me to get off my easy chair and get out and try to do something about it to stop the implementation of Common Core. That education should be local, but yet none of the teachers, parents, or school board had any input under the Common Core standards that are now being foisted upon us. And this is wrong. As education is the purview of local government, it has been since our inception, but it now has been taken over by entities unknown to all of the local entities. We must withdraw from Common Core and return that local control of education to our parents, our teachers, and our school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rothschild.
Thank you. Like Bob, my family moved here because of the schools, and so, yes, my oldest son is a 1st grader at Linton Springs Elementary. I have four-year-old sons, so you've got a lot to look forward to. So therefore, they'll be coming into our school system in the next year. When my oldest son started elementary school, I was a little bit of an overbearing parent, so I started volunteering in the classroom every week, and I was completely blown away. And since then, I continue to marvel at the strength of our school system. It's not perfect, there are things we need to work on, but what I see in the classroom are kids learning, teachers who care about our kids, and I'm very grateful that we are here and that my kids attend Carroll County Public Schools. So after volunteering in the classroom, I also became very active in the PTA. I've organized two years in a row the science fair at our school. Last year, I organized the three-day Earth Day event at our school. I sit on the Community Advisory Council, which is a board-appointed committee. I have attended every board meeting that I can in the past since my son started school. So I'm very active in our schools, and I'm thankful and grateful that I have these schools to send my children to.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, we'll start with Mr. Harmoni and go down the line. Please share with us your recent experiences with the Carroll County Public Schools, both in official or volunteer capacities.
What was the question again?
Okay, please share with us your recent experiences with CCPS, both in official or volunteer capacities.
Well, I can tell you this, is that I've worked with a lot of children from the CCPS system.
system. I was an assistant scout master for Troop 2007. I also played as a mentor in the mentorship program, not for CCPS, but for the Harrod County Public School System. I have also helped along with the, sat on the board of the Educational Opportunity Fund, which, what we're trying to do is we're trying to incorporate some of the private and the public school systems to work together. And I've also had the opportunity to attend lots of the school board meetings and listen to some of the problems. My daughter played with a lot of the public school children during sports throughout the county. My wife is a coach, an assistant coach for some of the public school teams. And I've talked to lots of parents and lots of teachers about some of the problems. My daughter is planning on going to high school in public school in Carroll County, and that's one of the other reasons I wanted to become involved and make sure that we can do something about the educational system and not have the implementation of the Common Core standards that are coming into this county.
Thank you. Mrs. Harrison?
I have a fine line here because as a board member, I'm mandated to come to board meetings. But the other volunteers, I worked with Jimmy Siller this week. Yesterday and today, we visit seven schools because we're trying, what we do is, we met with all the new teachers that came in this year because we wanted them to understand that we want them here. We're here to support them. We met with the teachers. The principals were not there. We wanted to know what they were feeling. We wanted to know, were they getting the help they needed. We wanted to know if they were happy. We wanted them to know that we really care about them, and any concerns that they have, we can help them with. We gave them business cards. We told them about things that were happening where they could get credits. We ensured them that they could call Jimmy or myself at any time because we want them here. We want them to stay here. They are our future. And also, last week, I worked with West Middle School as part of their community outreach program, and we met with all the elementary school system teachers, principals, last week. And we wanted to discuss how to make the kids feel comfortable in school and let them know that we're also here to help them in any way, if there's any situation that's uncomfortable to them or they find out that the kids are, and they don't know what to do about it.
Thank you. Mrs. Kowalski?
Yes, thank you. My position, I am a public school employee, and so my experience in that is to see the tremendous lack of morale among my coworkers, among the hard-working veteran teachers that have been there for decades. And there seems to be a tremendous feeling that our Board of Ed is out of touch, living in an, operating in an ivory tower. My suggestion is that administrative positions at central office must be required to come ten days minimum as substitute teachers, so they know what in the world is happening in the school system. We have administrative positions, supervisory, coming and evaluating teachers, who never walk into the building other than to do that evaluation, and they are out of touch. They need to get back in the classroom. In addition, let me talk to you about the superfluous positions. Director of Research and Accountability, Office of Business and Community Partnership, Supervisor of Equity and Community Outreach, Director of High School, Director of Middle School, Director of Elementary School, Public Relations. We have a position that handles a television station that, to me, is just propaganda and public relations, telling us how wonderful our school system is. Cut this, for goodness' sakes, and get, we have Manchester Valley sitting over there. We've been told there's sixty percent capacity. Let's get all those people from central office out of that building into the extra space in Manchester Valley and start, I don't know, renting out the Board of Ed building, something.
Thank you. Mr. Lord?
I don't know if a minute and a half is going to do me justice. I will say, the most recent thing I've done, I went on a field trip to the Baltimore Zoo with my son, which is something I love to do. I volunteer extensively in his classroom, along with my daughter, but she doesn't want me there as much. But that's a daughter. But I'm a parent guide with the Carroll County School System. It's a volunteer organization, and we help parents navigate the school system. We are essentially librarians for the school system, help parents find those answers or find the resources they really need. You know, I'm chair of the Community Advisory Council, which helps get the message from the board back to the community. I sit on the Education that's Multicultural Council to ensure that the schools are adhering to the state laws. And I get to meet some wonderful people because I get to visit lots of schools. I get to meet wonderful teachers. I get to meet parents with all their concerns, along with teachers' concerns. Not everything is perfect, and that is with every organization. But I get to hear the concerns. I'm the founder of Carroll Valley's Education, so there are lots of parents with children that are in our school system that contact me continuously and let me know what their concerns are within this school system, and what they like and what they don't like. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nason?
With grown daughters out on their own, and most of my grandchildren in other states, you wouldn't think I would have a whole lot of contact with school kids. But I'm left-handed, which means that I see things from a different perspective. For the last fifteen years, I've been a golf coach at the college level. One of the things that I noticed during that fifteen years was the progressive and increasing inability of competent high school graduates to articulate a simple sentence, to handle simple math. And I've said, "There's got to be something going on wrong here." Got the opportunity, when I learned about what was happening here, particularly with respect to Common Core, and I said, "I think I can make a difference." As a result, I bring that experience, not so much my teaching experience at Hopkins, but that hands-on experience with college students to this particular task, and I believe I can handle it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roenick?
Thank you. When my children were involved in school here in Carroll County, I was deeply involved in their athletic endeavors. I coached for eighteen years, everywhere from boys baseball, boys basketball. And I was deeply involved. We were a fixture at South Carroll High School during my daughter's years, where I was an assistant coach in field hockey, girls' basketball, girls' lacrosse, deeply entrenched in the boosters program and fundraising and carrying on events for the students. Also, I started a charity also called TOOLS, which stands for Teenagers Offening Others Love and Service Incorporated. And that was a charity that took high school students and went out and did minor home repair for the elderly, the indigent, and the handicapped of Carroll County. It was a wonderful experience, basically teaching construction skills to teenagers that, as every insurance guy that I contact but one said, teenagers and construction do not mix. It was a great endeavor to do what we needed to do. It was a wonderful time that we did it. Those were the jobs that had to be absolutely perfect in what we did, and there was no room for error when you're dealing with construction projects and elderly and disabled people. I attended, most recently, I've attended numerous town hall meetings in the school system. I was not able to attend many board meetings just because at five o'clock and at ten o'clock in the morning, gainfully employed had no time. However, through reading the newspaper and getting involved online and finding out what was missing, I think I know a fair amount of what's going on in Carroll County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rothschild?
I guess one other thing I can add is I'm a substitute teacher at the outdoor school, so I have spent a large amount of time there this year. So that's been a really great experience. That's a program that our community loves, and we're concerned about it being cut. So it has been a really great opportunity to be out there, to see those teachers out there. It's some of the most incredible teaching I've ever seen happening out there, and some of the most intense learning that is going on for our students out there. So I have felt lucky to get to do that. I've spent this year, since I've decided to run for the Board of Ed, I have been touring as many schools as I could. I want to see what's happening, what our students are actually doing. I've been able to talk to teachers and talk to the kids and talk to principals, so that's been also very rewarding. I guess, since I've got some time, I'll talk about what I think are some of the important issues that we need to work to address. I really feel like, oh, thirty seconds. Teacher pay is the number-one issue in our schools right now. We have to provide our teachers with competitive salaries. I think that we need to increase parental involvement opportunities, and I also believe that our communication could be better and needs to be better system-wide.
Thank you. Mr. Desper?
Thank you. I started volunteering when our oldest, Sylvia, started Freedom Elementary in kindergarten five years ago. And I have found volunteering in our school system in the classroom to be a very rewarding and fulfilling experience. There's no greater feeling than giving of service and not expecting anything in return. One of the things that I think is absolutely critical is to volunteer in our school system. And one of the things that I'm proud of with the school system that we have here in Carroll County is the number of volunteers that we have. It's amazing, the network of parents who are involved. When I went to public school, I don't recall seeing volunteers in the school building, in the classrooms, in the hallways, like we do here. One of the unique perspectives that you get when you volunteer is you're down in the trenches. You get to see what's going on. You get to observe what's happening in the classroom. You pick up on the attitude, the atmosphere in the building, and it really helps you understand the issues. I also serve on the Board of Directors for the South Carroll Business Association, and as a local business here in Carroll County. A couple of years ago, Jason Arnold, when he was at South Carroll High School, started a business partnership program. And I was one of the founding businesses that first year when that program was started. And so I have been involved with South Carroll High School and various things there. And I think volunteering is something that is absolutely critical.
Thank you. Mrs. Harrison, we'll start with you this time. If you'd like me to read this one again, I will because it's gone along. Do you have any other board experience? Describe when you served, any challenges the board encountered, and the board's accomplishments during your term. Was this an elected or appointed position? If appointed, who appointed you?
The first time I served on the board, I was appointed by the governor to serve one of the board members that left. And then the second time I served, I ran, and this is ending up my four years, and it really has gone quickly. Being on the board, you have five board members, and you personally can't decide this is what you want to do. It's a collaboration of working with the superintendent and the school system to work on their goals. And we are there to support. And when you're working, working with the school system, names come across papers all the time. So one of the things that I did, because it's so many names, and you just don't know these people, I went out and started visiting schools so I could find out what the climate was and what was going on in the school system, in each school. And in that way, you know where you can help and what's needed. And one of the things that did happen was, we started the Educational Foundation, which, I'm very sorry to say, did not last long enough. But I was devoted to that. We gave money, did everything we possibly could. And I really thought it was a success, and I am very sorry that it wasn't sustainable.
Thank you. Mrs. Kowalski?
No, I have never sat on the Board of Education before. However, I have attended several Board of Ed meetings. And myself personally, I have found the Board of Ed to be very irresponsive, I felt. I raised many, many concerns, various concerns, and I have found a tremendous lack of responsiveness. And also bringing many various concerns to my daughter's own school, and I've found a tremendous lack of responsiveness. And I know that I'm not the only parent that feels this way. I'm not exactly sure, you know, how to share that, or other than that, I mean, I had, for example, and this goes back to Common Core, that, you know, the kind of books that are in our school now, my daughter was, her class was assigned a book, terrible, terrible book with the F-word in it numerous times. The book, Denigrated Christianity. I said, "I don't want my daughter reading this book." And I went to the Board of Ed meeting and never received a single response from the Board of Ed members at the meeting. As to, "We're concerned about that. We'll look into it," nothing from the elected Board of Ed members. Why? I think this speaks, I'm going to say boldly, that I do believe we need some kind of tax credits for people that want to send their kids to private school. They need competition, big time, big time.
Thank you. Mr. Lord?
No, I can honestly say I've never served on a board, but I serve on various committees, which is similar to a board, but much broader. And by working with all these committees throughout all these different years, I have that experience, you know, that it doesn't take one person. It takes a group of people to make a sound decision, and we get to weigh out everything. You know, our Board of Education consists of five members. Well, most of the committees I sit on are forty people, maybe a hundred, you know. And we all have to work together towards the same common goal. So I believe I have that kind of experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nason?
No. However, remember, I'm left-handed, which means that I've had to approach an awful lot of life situations from the other perspective. In most of my working career, I was a problem solver, and I saw problems arising here in the Carroll County school system. I have the expertise to be able to start digging, start asking questions, and start insisting on answers. We do well here. We could do a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roenick?
Yes, I have, and I currently am serving as a member of the school board up in the Saint John Catholic Church in Westminster. I've been the construction chair up there for over seven years at this point. In addition, and I'll get back to that shortly, in addition, I also, as founder of the aforementioned charity, TOOLS, as the founder and president of the company, deeply involved with all aspects from safety of the kids to running down insurance, dealing with the community partnership, Carroll County for Healthier Carroll County, and getting clients, Department of Social Services, dealing with insurance regulations, safety regulations, and numerous other issues. The most difficult part that I've had to deal with at Saint John Catholic was, we had to downsize the school. We were a double-track school where we had two classes for, all classes first through eighth. Several years ago, we fell on very difficult times being solely responsible on our families for our funding, and we had to downsize several of the classes. It's heartbreaking when you go through and realize that the teachers that you have to cut and the responsibilities that are cast upon you as a school board. So I'm very sensitive to funding issues, to taking care of teachers, and extremely sensitive in providing an excellent product at whatever cost it takes to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rothschild?
I too have never sat on the Board of Education. Like I said, I am a member of the Community Advisory Council, which is a board-appointed committee. I've spent this year and last year during our budget discussions, I have met with all, most of our commissioners, the majority of our commissioners. I've met with central office staff to try and gather information. And then I have tried to get that out and disseminate that to parents so that they could get involved in the budget discussions. The role of the Board of Ed, I believe, is to provide a venue for the community to have democratic input into our local education system. So it's very important, and there should be genuine structures in place for this community input to take place. I think there are some things that we can change about the way the Board of Ed currently works. I know, as somebody who has stood up in front of them and talked many, many times, it is really nerve-wracking to stand up there for three minutes, make your heartfelt speech, and then to have no public feedback. So in that, I do agree with Mary. I feel like there needs to be some way for these comments to be addressed publicly. So that's something I'd like to see changed. I also would like to see the Board of Ed members going out into our schools more, perhaps attending, like an ambassador program, where they, each Board of Ed member would be assigned to some schools, and they would be ambassadors at those PTA meetings, so that the local community could get a personal relationship with the Board of Ed.
Thank you. Mr. Desper?
Although I've never served on a Board of Education, I have served on various other types of boards and in advisory capacities. My first board experience was about fifteen years ago, when I served on a homeowners association. years ago, when I served on a homeowners' association board where we were living at the time. I also am a former Assistant Attorney General for the state of Maryland, and served at the pleasure of our current Attorney General Doug Gansler, who appointed me, and I served in that capacity for nearly four years. During that time, I provided advice and guidance to two different state agencies, one being the Department of Housing and Community Development and the Maryland Food Center Authority. I also currently am serving on my second term on the South Carroll Business Association, which is a group of business owners here throughout Carroll County that is focused on promoting and growing local business here within the county. I also, by profession, as an attorney, I'm a problem solver. People come to me every day for assistance in solving their problems, and I'm also an advocate. And that's what I would intend to do and be committed to doing in serving on the Board of Education, is being an advocate for our children and pursuing the things that are in their best interest.
Thank you. Mr. Harmoni?
Thank you. I have not served on the Board of Education. I have served on other boards. I've served on the Education Opportunity Fund. I've served on the Board of Reviews, also on the Board of Licensing in Carroll County. But one thing I have done, I've attended enough Board of Education meetings to know that there are problems in the Board of Education. And what happens is if you get five members that are all go-along to get-along individuals, and they have a unity of thought, not a diversity of ideas, new things don't happen. It's the old thing from day to day, from year to year. We need a different way of thinking. We need some new members on the board. The problem is, they think it's more important to build up a surplus and to hold on to the taxpayers' money than to pay the teachers their step raises, or to pay the starting teachers their salary increases. In today's market, we have the lowest-paid, starting-salary teachers. They start on a ten-month plan at twenty-nine thousand nine hundred, and they start on an eleven-month work schedule at forty thousand. They haven't had a raise. None of the teachers have had a raise for six years, but they sit on a fifteen-and-a-half-million-dollar surplus. If we had had some different-minded people that could come up with budget ideas, we could get these things done.
Thank you. Mrs. Kowalski, we'll start with you on this new question. Do you agree or disagree with the following statement, and please explain? Quote, "We should hold our students and our schools to a set of rigorous standards that prepare our students to be college and career-ready. In the process, we should give Carroll County schools full control over developing and implementing curriculum to ensure that these standards are being met."
Okay, yes, thank you. Rigorous standards, yes, absolutely. And this deeply concerns me because this is sort of one of those kind of things that's put out there to promote Common Core, that somehow this will bring about rigorous standards, as if our teachers and our local school board is not able to do that without the intervention of federal and state authorities. So I absolutely believe in, in local control of our education and rigorous standards. They go together. They are not inseparable. Now, talking about college and career readiness, I think we need to be very careful that we do not neglect our VOTAC in terms of things like cosmetology classes, woodworking, auto mechanics, these kinds of things. I don't know if it's true, but my concern, I've, I've heard a little bit about some of those programs maybe being threatened to be cut or being cut. Not everybody is meant to go to college. I grew up in a large family with eight children, six brothers. They are doing very well in their private businesses, never went to college. I will say some of them never even finished high school, and they're making a very good living for their families and happy doing it. And we need to realize, everybody's not meant, I think, I will tell you, I think, I will speak boldly, I have to wonder what's going on that we're pushing everybody for college, and kids are coming out of college with hundred-thousand-dollar debts. This is, this is wrong.
Thank you. Mr. Lord?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Certainly. Do you agree or disagree with the following statement, and please explain? "We should hold our students and our schools to a set of rigorous standards that prepare our students to be college and career-ready. In the process, we should give Carroll County schools full control over developing and implementing curriculum to ensure that these standards are being met."
Yes, I agree. I agree. Our, our, the statement is college and career-ready. Yes, not every student, you know, is prepared or wants to go to college, but needs to be prepared for the world that's ahead of them. The other part of the statement is that we should have local control, and we do. Our, our curriculum is set locally by teachers, by Curriculum Council, and I believe we're doing a fantastic job at that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nason?
How can you argue with a sentiment like that? Well, just remember, the devil's in the details. When we're talking about career and college-ready, particularly college-ready, how many of you are aware that college-ready under Common Core means you possess a GED or a high school diploma? That's it. That's what we have today. How is that doing better? As far as rigorous standards at the local level is concerned, that also is easy to agree with, so long as it's at the local level. The rigorous standards that we hear bandied about today, talked about and pushed, come from, guess where? Common Core, the federal Race to the Top Program, which, by the way, has not been funded by the Department of Education through the normal channels, like all school funding has to be. Keep in mind, the devil is in the details. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roenig?
Yes, we should have rigorous standards that our students should, should be, should be adhering to. We're not getting them under Common Core. There were two professors, one of them spoke here in Carroll County, Dr. Sandra Stotsky from the University of Arkansas and University of Massachusetts, and her statement, she's in English and Language Arts curriculum. She was a member of the Validation Committee. She did not sign off on it because she felt that the curricular was, was, the standards were too far from where they should have been, too substandard, resulting in our students being nowhere near college-ready in the English language and the literature subjects. Dr. James Milgram, a mathematician of math, of a mathematician of Stanford University, also a member of the Validation Committee, did not sign off on it. You will not see their names listed anywhere associated with Common Core because, because they were, they did not sign off on it because they felt the standards were too substandard. They were expunged from the record. I would have to assume that these professors that assisted in the developing of the Common Core standards, that felt that they were eventually substandard and they were never internationally benchmark, I will follow their advice in saying that it is a substandard set of standards, and no, we should not adhere, have our children's, our children adhere to it. Yes, I think absolutely we should be able to institute our own curriculum with our parent, teachers, and school board input. We've got wonderful teachers and families here in Carroll County. We can do a wonderful job in coming up with our own curriculum and standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rothschild?
I too agree that we should have rigorous standards for our kids and that we should maintain local control of our curriculum. We currently do have control of our curriculum. It has been written here in Carroll County. As Bob mentioned, we have a Curriculum Advisory Council that has directors at the central office level, directors and supervisors. It has teachers and it has parents on it. They are the one who, ones who have written our curriculum here in Carroll County. Yes, we are mandated to incorporate the standards, the Common Core state standards, which are simply objectives that each child should meet by the end of each grade. But yes, we should have local control of our curriculum, and we do have local control of our curriculum.
Thank you. Mr. Desper?
Yes, I too agree that we should have rigorous, rigorous standards so that our children are prepared for college or for a career that they may choose to go into. We are proud to be Carroll Countyans here, but first and foremost, we are Americans, and we must remember that with technology today, we are competing across the world globally, whether we want to or not. In the past two years, with the Internet, with my website, I've had phone calls from people in Romania and Germany that have legal interests here in, in Maryland, and it's something that we can't ignore, that we have to be able to compete on a global level. I too think that we also have local control of our school system. I know there's a lot of concerns over the implementation of Common Core and that it was rushed, but we have to remember, and there may be those out there that don't realize this, that the curriculum is set here on a local level. And just like anything new, there's always quirks and kinks to be worked out. A lot of us today love Apple products. Think every time they release a new operating system, you know, a few weeks, few months later, you'll get that there's an update to fix bugs. So I think it's important that we take a look at Common Core and, and identify what's working and improve on it, and identify what's not working, and, and improve on it or get rid of it.
Thank you. Mr. Harmoni?
Common Core, uh, Common Core, sorry. It should be controlled, the educational system should be controlled at a local level, and that is protected under the Supreme Court law. The parents' rights are broadly protected by the Supreme Court's decision, Meyer and Pierce, especially in the area of education. But we have to look at what's going on, the broader view in this county. We've got, we got five-hundred thousand dollars initially to implement Common Core. But the problem with that is that, to finish the implementation of Common Core, we're talking twenty million dollars. It's twenty million dollars of taxpayers' money. Common Core will take away the educational rights of the parents and the local officials and teachers. The standards of Common Core are actually copyrighted and owned by private organizations. The Corps violates the spirit of federal law and federalizing education, and the states will become little more than administrative agents for nationalized K-12 programs. The government has simply paid others to do that which is forbidden for them to do. We're already seeing some of this. As I said, I have a lot of communication with parents and teachers in the public school system via the sports programs. The parents are complaining that tests are not sent home for the parents to help their, their students correct the, the missed questions, and when they ask the teachers if they can have the test, the teachers don't send them home. They said they cannot have the test. So Common Core will take the control away from the parents.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Harrison?
I'm sorry, could you read the question again?
Yeah, okay. "Do you agree or disagree with the following statement, and please explain? 'We should hold our students and our schools to a set of rigorous standards that prepare our students to be college and career-ready. In the process, we should give Carroll County schools full control over developing and implementing curriculum to ensure that these standards are being met.' Do you agree or disagree with that?"
I partially agree with that. I agree with rigor, that, and we should be accountable. I truly agree with that. And I agree that we should have, Carroll County should have input, which we do. But I think we need a set of, a set of standards, a goal, a common goal, so that we can all be on the same playing field, you know, because if you said each county, well, some county may be here, and another county may be here. We want to get the most of our money and get, give our kids the best education possible. So I really do believe that the rigor and, and we, and they should hold us accountable for educating them, giving them the best education possible so that they can compete in the society once they get out of school. And I think it's proper that we always raise our standards.
Thank you. Mr. Lord, we'll start with you on this one. According to the 2012-2013 Education Fact Book, Carroll County has the lowest salary for first-year teachers in the entire state of Maryland. It's pretty poor, isn't it? Also, the average salary for all teachers in our county is seventeenth lowest in the state. Given that neighboring counties have among the highest salaries in the state, what is your plan to attract and retain high-quality teachers to teach in Carroll County?
Well, the simple answer to that would be funding. But since Support Education is not the taxing authority, we must evaluate our school system, look for efficiencies. But teachers, bottom line, need raises. We need to raise that scale so starting teachers will have a better starting pay, so that we attract the quality ones. We also need to attract the, the experienced educators to our county, and the bottom line is funding. Teachers don't want to come here because of the funding. So we need to advocate for more funding, whether it be at a county level or a state level.
Thank you. Mr. Nason?
If I'm not mistaken, the teachers work under a union-negotiated contract, which calls for step increases each year. When I started attending board meetings last year, I heard the complaints about teacher salaries, and I did a little digging. And I still haven't gotten an answer to my question. Why aren't the teachers getting their step increases that are negotiated under their contract? About ten years ago, the Board of Commissioners at that time started allowing the Board of Ed to keep unused funds from year to year. That balance has built now to over fifteen million dollars, and the teachers still are not getting their step increases under their contract. And I don't know why. I still don't know why. I've asked, I've yet to get an answer. Does anybody here have an answer? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roenig?
As was mentioned in my open, opening comments, enrollment is down. And if spending was down commensurate with student population, our budget should have decreased fourteen million dollars, but it has not. It is flat. But any business where the customer base is shrinking, in our case, student enrollment, but spending continues to increase or stays flat, that it will soon be out of business, or at least the manager will have to be replaced as that business will be shut down. We have three major problems in Carroll County. Number one is Common Core. It is, it'll cost us approaching forty million dollars before this thing is completely implemented. Forty million dollars, where we had a curriculum and standards that were working before. Carroll rated very high in our student assessments on exams. Second to Common Core would be the Manchester Valley Debt Service. That was a school that was built by, by questionable means in the fact that there was no state participation in the building of that school. The debt service on that is ten million dollars. The last is the Board of Ed is asking for a new Charles Carroll, Carroll Elementary School. They've, they've funded twelve million dollars for that school. So all told, there's forty-two million dollars that we're spending that, that doesn't have to be spent other than the debt service on Manchester Valley. We can't get out of this, but when is the Board gonna start caring about this teacher salaries in this county? Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rothschild?
Would you repeat the question, please?
Sure. According to the 2012-2013 Education Fact Book, Carroll County has the lowest salary for first-year teachers in the entire state of Maryland. Also, the average salary for all teachers in our county is seventeenth lowest in the state. Given that neighboring counties have among the highest salaries in the state, what is your plan to attract and retain high-quality teachers to teach in Carroll County?
Thank you. Like I've already said, I believe the lack of competitive salaries for our teachers is the biggest issue facing our school system, and it needs to be addressed. One idea I have, and it wouldn't cover all costs, but we have twelve percent of our teachers are age sixty or older, so they are close to being eligible for retirement. They also, I presume, have been teaching longer and are making salaries. If we could provide some type of incentive package to get some of them, not all of them, we need their leadership, but to retire early, we could then, and we'd have to do it simultaneously because we don't want these teachers to leave and not have our starting salary higher. If we can raise our salary, starting salary, at the same time, we might be able to attract more teachers. So that's one way, that's not going to cover all of the costs, but that's one way we could go about it. As far as the surplus fund, we are using that, the school board is using that money to give back to teachers. About thirteen million of it will be going back to teachers as one-time bonuses. You, it costs- You, it costs about $4 million every year if you're gonna give teachers a raise, so you have to raise it $4 million every year. The surplus fund wouldn't cover that, but the money predominantly is going back to our teachers, and I think that's important. And I would just like to ask, hopefully we'll have a Common Core question, where the $20 to $40 million to fund Common Core is going to, because I don't, I don't understand that number.
Thank you. Mr. Desper?
I learned a long time ago that the greatness of a school or a school system is not determined by the bricks and mortar of the buildings. It's determined by the greatness of the teachers inside. One of the things that we've been fortunate and blessed with here in this county are great teachers. However, that's starting to change. We're not keeping current talent, and we're not attracting new talent. And if that trend continues for very long, then we're in danger of our school system not remaining the great system that it has been for a number of years. Budget and funding is how we solve this problem, and it's not an easy problem. This has been going on for so many years, it's not gonna be a quick, easy, overnight fix. We're not gonna be able to cure this in one year. I'm the type of person that I don't give up very easy. I fight hard for things, and I think we need to take a close look at the current budget if we can't get more money from our county commissioners. And we need to work well, we need to have a good working relationship with our county commissioners in helping them understand what the needs are of our children and of our school system. As I said earlier, this is not about politics, and we need to get politics out of education because education is simply something that affects all of us, and it's a matter of our future. I learned recently that Mr. Semino at Liberty High School is leaving our school system for a higher-paying job in another neighboring system. I live down in Eldersburg, and if you've ever had the opportunity to attend his productions, in my opinion, they are equal to, if not better than, some of the Broadway shows. That's sad. We need to keep our teachers.
Thank you. Mr. Harmon?
It's this simple. We have a master contract, and we need to follow that contract. We've only given four of the 10 steps that the teachers deserve. That's one of the main complaints I've heard throughout the county from teachers, is the fact that they feel unappreciated. The teachers haven't received a raise in five years. The Board of Ed and the CCEA has decided not to give them raises. The starting salaries are the lowest, that's true. Like I said, $29,900 for 10-month plan and $40,000 for the 11th month work plan. But the salary decisions belong to the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed's sitting on a surplus of $15.5 million. They could've done something for the teachers, but have they done anything? No, they haven't. The average teacher in this, in this county makes $59,000, and if you add the benefits, it's about $79,000. That's, that's about the middle of the road. They're not the ones that are the main teachers complaining, it's the starting teachers. The ones that are trying to start families and don't have enough money to put, put food on the table, they have to have second jobs. And they're the ones that are leaving and getting jobs in other counties. I have a friend that's a teacher, and he got a job in Montgomery County because the salary was much higher, and that Board of Ed cared about giving those teachers raises. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Harrison?
We have the lowest starting salary for teachers among the 24 Maryland school system, and it is, it has been that way for the last five years. But what you don't realize is the school system has two budgets. We have a capital budget and we have an operating budget. And our operating budget is where the teachers' salaries come from, and once the budget is set, you can't change it. Because we've, our enrollment is going down, the state has cut us. And what the state gives us is a net operating budget. And five years ago, long before that, we were giving teachers every so often they would get a step, an increase. But because the state cut our money, we couldn't give the increase. And then we were funded at maintenance of effort. We don't have extra money. We can't give what we don't have. But what we have done is we came up with some money to give bonuses. So we've given bonus for three years, and that has to be under contract. And once we, and when that three years is up, we'll have a new contract, and we'll sign a new contract, and hopefully by then, we will be in a position where we can give our teachers more money. And I think it's crucial that we work very hard to get this effort going.
Thank you. Mrs. Kowalski?
Yes, thank you. The question is, what is your plan to attract and retain high-quality teachers? Well, I think we need to address the salaries of teachers, that's affecting morale very heavily. But the question, obvious question, is where do we get the money for this? Do we raise taxes? Do we go back to the county commissioners and ask for more money? What do we do? Where's the money come from? And I say that rather than increase taxes and go to the commissioners for more money, I say we've got to start looking at the tremendous waste in our school system. I see it, I work in the school system. I used to work at William Winchester, and let me tell you, five or six years ago, they just put an addition onto that school. Now our Board of Ed has hired an outside consultant that's saying they need to close William Winchester, close the school. Okay, can you imagine putting, just putting an addition onto your house and then abandoning it and closing it down and moving on in five years and building a brand-new house? You don't do that in private business. The taxpayers don't do that. Our Board of Ed needs to stop this terrible, poor planning. Manchester Valley High School, they say it's at 60% capacity. And that, my understanding, is why we didn't get 50% matching funds from the state. They built the school too big. It's almost twice as big as it should've been built. That helped the private contractors that got the deals, but who did it help? The kids know, the taxpayers know. What's going on with the planning at our, at our Board of Ed that we have a school sitting at 60% capacity when they had all the data and all the statistics to begin with?
Thank you. Mr. Nason, we'll start with you on this next one. According to a recent editorial in the Carroll County Times, "Education Becomes Partisan", several of you have been, quote, "approved by Richard Rothschild as being conservative enough." Do you see yourself as being independent of his views or consistent with them?
Thank you. This is a nonpartisan campaign. We have people in this room who are Republicans, who are Democrats, who are independent, and I bet most, if not all, of you have kids in school. That's what's important here, not partisanship. That didn't belong in the paper, and I hope it stops. We're not here battling Democrats or Republicans or unaffiliateds, I believe that's the term the state now uses. We're here to do the best thing for our kids' education and future. And I hope we can put this other nonsense aside and proceed with a civil discussion about what's important: the kids, their education, their future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roenig?
I believe this, this campaign and everyone running for the board, from the different forums and meetings and such that we've had, I have never heard of any partisan politics, Democrat, Republican, Independent, Unaffiliated, or whatnot. So there's only one person that's made this a partisan race, and that's the author of the article. So I take exception to the fact that this, to him, it may be a partisan race. We're all doing what we think is best for the students of Carroll County, as I mentioned in my opening remarks. We need to seek, seek the best thing we can for our students, our families, and our teachers, and I don't think partisanship belongs there at all.
Thank you. Mrs. Rothschild?
I fully agree with everything that Mr. Nason said. I certainly don't want this to be political, but it wasn't just the editorial that was political. One of, at the Commissioner Forum, a Commissioner endorsed three candidates. So it was both of those people, and I, yes, I agree, that's not appropriate. This is, it absolutely shouldn't be about politics. People should elect the individuals that they believe will put student success first and be able to advocate for our students the best and for the best interests of our teachers and community.
Thank you. Mr. Desper?
I think you all know my position. I've said it several times, I said it in my opening remarks. This is a nonpartisan office, and I'm committed to keeping the politics out of education. I think with all the political pressure that is out there, it's easy sometimes to succumb to that. However, I'm committed to not doing that. I've had several people approach me and ask me, "What's your political affiliation?" And I just smile, and I say, "Why does it matter? I'm not running for a political office. I'm not running for county commissioner, I'm running for Board of Education." Education, I'm gonna sound like a broken record. It affects all of us. It just simply does not matter what our political affiliation is. We need to have a Board of Education that cares about all of our children and is committed to facing the tough challenges that are before our school system head-on, and investigating those issues, looking into them, getting to the bottom of them before they vote yes or no. And that's the type of person I am. I'm committed to looking at each and every issue that comes before the Board and evaluating it and making a decision before I vote yes or no on anything. I also am the type of person that's very approachable and personable, and I have an open-door policy. I believe in working with others. If elected to the Board, I'm not here to make decisions independently of myself. I want to hear from our community, from our parents, from our students, and make that a team effort in voting on issues.
Thank you. Mr. Harmon?
Here's the thing, this is a nonpartisan race, but we're all different parties, but we all come together when it comes to education. It's not anyone's fault up here that we're endorsed by one person versus another person. The teachers' union decided, they picked their three to endorse. So I don't, I fail to see the difference between that versus whatever one of the commissioners would say. Now, who's made this partisan is the editor of the Carroll County Times. And what he should really do, instead of trying to direct his readers on who to vote for, he should try to put more effort in selling his papers instead of his partisan hack articles that he writes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Harrison?
Could I have the question again?
Sure. According to a recent editorial in the Carroll County Times, which apparently is titled "Education Becomes Partisan", several of you have been, quote, "approved by Richard Rothschild as being conservative enough." Do you see yourself as being independent of his views or consistent with them?
I see myself as being totally independent, have independent views. I, I believe, this is a nonpartisan office, and I think that the, what we should have is more of the truth of what's really going on in the school system. I've heard some things about what's happening in the school system, and I'm really stunned to hear, you know? And what I would suggest is that we get more facts, and let's stick with the facts rather than what they're hearing. I was always taught, my mother would always say to me, "Virginia, in all the things that you acquire in this life, acquire understanding." Just because somebody tell you something, don't believe it. If they said the door's locked, try the door anyway because it might be open. That's the way I feel. I want to look into it, I want to know for myself if this is the truth or not.
Thank you. Excuse me. Mr. Lord?
Uh, no.
Yep, skipped again.
It's okay.
Mrs. Kowalski?
I didn't read the article or what have you that it was. I, although I have to say that I, in a certain extent, second Mr. Harmon's, that I think, you know, the newspaper stirs up a lot of unnecessary controversy that does not need to happen. However, I, do I agree with Richard Rothschild? I mean, I'm, I, I present myself as a conservative, I am a conservative, and he, I believe, is. There's some things I agree with, with him, some things I would not agree with, as it would be with any, anyone. But this kind of, you know, I think there's so much, whether it's a conservative or liberal or what have you, there's so much nonsense that goes on from politicians that this has led me to strongly push for term limits. I think that, in fact, as far as the Board of Ed goes, we have a, somebody on the Board of Ed that's been there 20 years. I mean, I went to one meeting, and honestly, this person looked like they were falling asleep in the middle of the meeting. I mean, this is what happens when you've been, been in office for 20 years, you know, you'd be, you just, for goodness sakes, I mean, they think that seat belongs to them, and they really do. This is what's, what's wrong. Let's get term limits for a Board of Ed, and, and that'll help get some of the politics out of, out of elected office locally, most definitely. What happens when somebody's been in office for four years? They, people, they know too much about politics, okay?
Thank you. Mr. Lord?
Thank you. I completely am an independent thinker. I firmly believe that politics needs to remain out of education. As I said in my opening statement, it's about our communities, it's not about politics. I'm an open person. I'm willing to listen to all sides, every story, every issue, every problem, and every solution, you know? So I firmly believe that party-line politics needs to remain out of education. It's about the parents, it's about our communities. They are the ones that need to run our school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Roenig, we'll start with the next question. Some candidates have stated that they will end Common Core. As a school board member, what authority do you feel you have to accomplish that?
The school board is responsible for the educational excellence of every student in the county. As I, as I said it earlier, that education is the responsibility and a right that's left under the 10th Amendment of the U.S. Constitution to state and local school boards to determine what the, what the standards are and what the curriculum is to achieve those standards. There was no, again, no input for the standards of Common Core from any teacher, parent, or county member or school board. Yet there's, there's no field testing, there was no pilot testing. We basically have exposed our children to be guinea pigs in the Common Core State Standard Initiative program. But the program can't be changed. It's copyrighted by Achieve as well as by National Governors Association. It can't be changed. No curriculum, no standards is perfect. You've got to be able to change. The standards cannot be changed. There are so many problems wrong with Common Core, we could have an entire evening and still not get to the bottom of it. If we want our students to be the best students that they can be, and get the students the individual attention that they deserve, Common Core assumes that every student learns at the same rate, the same way, nationally. That is just not right. Teachers need to be involved in the education, they need to be able to be removed of the shackles of Common Core and be able to give the individual attention that each student needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rothschild?
There are four Maryland state laws that mandate the school systems in the state use the Common Core state standards. So if we were to somehow pull out of them, we would be an unaccredited school system, and we would not be able to give out diplomas. So I believe that what we need to focus on is the problems we're actually having with the implementation of Common Core. And the two biggest ones, I think, are insufficient professional development for our teachers and lack of communication or insufficient communication with our parents. I think the school system, and they've requested it, but I would prioritize putting math resource teachers in our elementary schools, so there's a resident expert there on, on the new curriculum, and somebody who can provide professional development for our teachers. And I think we need to explain these changes better to our parents. They are scared that they are going to be, that they're being asked not to be involved with their kids' education, and that's completely unacceptable. So I think the Board of Ed or the superintendent needs to provide a directive saying this, that parents are absolutely essential and partners in their children's learning. I would like to see principals hold math nights so parents can understand the actual changes. These are the type of changes that are going to help our kids succeed under this curriculum, and that's where I think we should focus our resources.
Thank you. Mr. Desper?
I agree with Mrs. Rothschild. It's not as simple as some of the candidates have made it sound, that you can repeal or opt out of or choose not to accept Common Core. The reality is, Common Core is the law, and if you want to change Common Core, then there's an awful lot of lobbying that needs to be done with our state leaders as well as our national leaders. And education dollars, both from the state and from the federal government, have been tied to it. I had a conversation once with Mr. Guthrie, and we were joking about budget matters of how it certainly would be a lot easier if we could just set up our own mint and print our own money. That would solve all of our problems, but that's, that's a dream, a fantasy. If that's not reality, it's not gonna happen. I think we've got to remember and focus that we're talking about a set of national standards, and they're just that, they're standards. The local curriculum of how we teach those standards- standards is determined on the local level. This is brand-new. It was rushed. There are problems. I will admit that. I see that in my own household. My fourth-grade daughter coming home with math tests, poor scores, and that's common throughout the class, getting emails from the teacher that an entire fourth-grade class failed a math test. There's a problem. We need to look at what the problem is and work on fixing that. We need to take the time to structure the curriculum on a local level that will get us to those standards. If a standard is that a kindergartner needs to know what one plus one is, we need to, on a local level, determine how to teach that.
Thank you. Mr. Harmoning?
Here's the thing about Common Core. First of all, I don't know if you remember the bill, House Bill or Senate Bill, SB 281, which was the new gun law that came down. We decided in this county we weren't going to honor that because it was unconstitutional. The first thing, when you're an elected official, you're under oath to protect the Constitution. That's your first, your first important goal. The rain tax, that was another mandate from the state. We decided to be rain tax-free in this county. We can also be Common Core free in this county. The Supreme Court held the right to the parents to raise their children from, free from unreasonable state interferences in one of the unwritten liberties protected by the due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. We have the right to decide how our children are going to be educated. Common Core was not prepared by teachers. It was created by a company named Archive and David Coleman, with the majority of the funding coming from Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. Dr. James Milligan was on the math feedback group and validation committee. He refused to sign off on the math. This is a bad program. It's a bad educational program that was tried, they tried to implement it in three years. We need to grab it by its roots and take it out of this county.
Thank you. Mrs. Harrison?
Um, Common Core is a framework. It's, that's what it is. It's a new framework of teaching and how you're teaching, and so we can have more rigor and a higher standard of education. There are some issues that we feel this with Common Core. We feel like the timeline that they, we were given to implement Common Core is too short. We need more time for our teachers to be properly trained, and we need more time so that our parents can get a Board. And our teachers, our local teachers, is helping develop this common, help develop standards in our county with the Common Core curriculum outcome. We have a lot of involvement. We can do it in the way that works best for us. Also, we don't have all the equipment now that we need to implement Common Core properly. That's the way I feel. But I do think it teaches you to think critically, and I think that is very, very important.
Thank you. Mrs. Kowalski?
Yes, thank you. Common Core, it sounds simple. It sounds good on the surface. I have deep concerns. Of course, we have to follow the law and implement it to the extent that we do have to legally. But if I was elected, I would definitely look into if there is a way to get out of it. The reason is, as Mr. Harmoning said, it's going to cost millions of dollars. If you want to know why we can't retain teachers, look at $20 million or such just to implement Common Core. And what is Common Core? It's President Barack Obama's so-called Race to the Top, and so it has three components. Common Core, which are standards. It has a teacher evaluation piece, and it has a testing the students piece. I don't want our students being given national tests. The tests should be more local. We have enough testing. We need teaching, not testing. It's too expensive. In addition, we're talking about these millions of dollars to pay for technology. Let me tell you, we've got Promethean boards, smart boards. The money's pouring into the pockets of welfare for corporations. I work in the schools. We see Promethean boards, $7,000 apiece. They sit in a corner 95% of the day gathering dust. It's terrible what's happening.
Thank you. Mr. Lord?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Certainly. Some candidates have stated that they will end Common Core. As a school board member, what authority do you feel you have to accomplish that?
As a school board member? Well, as what everybody else has repeated several times, it is a state directive, and on a local level, we don't have control to pull out of the Common Core standards. And that's just exactly what it is. It's standards. It's a framework. Our curriculum is created locally by teachers with input from parents, our community. I have met several teachers and had many conversations that write curriculum continuously. One thing that wasn't pointed out, I mean, it was pointed out that if we did have the ability to withdraw from Common Core, that we also lose the right to give out diplomas. Every diploma given out in Carroll County says Maryland, state diploma on it. These are Maryland state standards. We've always had standards, you know, just to get your driver's license. You have to have a minimum set of standards. So, but the one thing that hasn't been pointed out, that if we do have the ability to pull out of Common Core, we lose the right to give out a diploma, Maryland state diploma, but we also lose approximately $150 million from our school system. Who's going to make up that difference? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nason?
Would you read the question, please?
Sure. Some candidates have stated that they will end Common Core. As a school board member, what authority do you feel you have to accomplish that?
I'm one of those in favor of eliminating Common Core. First, I believe that there are constitutional safeguards that enable us as citizens and as board members to do what's right for the kids. Visualize, if you will, an Inuit Eskimo kid, a Hawaiian, Polynesian kid, somebody who grew up where I did, in the hood of Baltimore, and somebody who lives in New Windsor. Four totally different backgrounds, four totally different cultures. The local board understands that, works with it. You still get the fundamentals. What Common Core does, and we've only seen just a little bit of it. We've seen some of the math standards. What Common Core is aimed at is setting up a universal structure where everybody is taught the same lesson plan the same day, the same hour, and local uniqueness disappears. That bothers me. I'm not satisfied, by the way, I'm not anti-C Common Core, but I'm just not satisfied that it's up to the job, that it's ready for prime time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, Mrs. Rothschild, we'll start with you. We've heard that through implementation of the Common Core, our students will be given devices in the classroom. Can you please explain your understanding of these devices and what purpose they will serve within the classroom?
I too have heard, actually, I've heard it from some other candidates, that there'll be devices, so I guess they are going to have to explain that. The only device that I'm aware that is associated with the Common Core is computers, which we obviously already have in our school system. We will need computers and technology for the park assessment, but we are not getting computers that are dedicated to the park assessment. They, our computer labs are dedicated for instruction, and then they will also be used for the park assessment. So I am unaware of any other devices besides computers that are associated with the Common Core.
Thank you. Mr. Desper?
By devices, I'm going to base my marks, remarks off of the assumption that it means computers or computer-based technology. Technology's here to stay. It's a part of our lives, whether it makes it easier for you or sometimes frustrates you and makes you want to throw it out the window. That depends on the day and how it's working. I vividly remember when I was in third grade, seeing a computer for the very first time. I'm blown out of the water by my children today. My son, when he was in kindergarten last year, he's in first grade now. He can come home and get on the computer and knows his way around. He knows how to create things, print things, and it just boggles my mind. My father is in his 60s and still is scared to death of a computer and won't turn it on, won't touch it. So you see a vast difference in generations with technology. I think technology, for the most part, is a good thing. It does help us and make our lives easier. I think it's something that also we have to monitor with our children. So any devices that they are exposed to or using in the school system, I think, need to be appropriate for an academic setting. Need to have appropriate filters and things of that nature so that they can't access inappropriate material.
Thank you. Mr. Harmoning?
A lot of the devices used for Common Core are going to be high-tech computer devices, monitoring devices. It will include the storing of data. Some of the data will be 400 elements that Common Core will include that they will, they will keep track of. And a lot of it is about the children's family and also the children. Supposedly, Common Core will be able to monitor twitches that the child does in a classroom, how many times a child twitches. It'll be intrusive information. It can be anywhere from religious affiliation, diseases about the child, dwelling arrangements, dwelling ownership, relationships, family income. These will be devices that will house all this information. This is what some of the cost is going to be involved in Common Core. We don't see this now, but it's coming because we've just started the initiation of Common Core. But if Common Core is allowed to be fully implemented, it will be very, very intrusive in all areas of our parts of life, and that's where it's going to come from.
Thank you. Mr. Mrs. Harrison?
The devices that we're going to be using with, in the curriculum, will be handheld devices. We are working very hard to figure out how to secure the devices, and we are going to start to implement this next year. And we're, some of the kids have devices, such as the Kindle, your phone, and we're going somehow see that every child gets a device, and all the kids will have the devices to work on and take tests and use in the classrooms. We're still working it out, some things that we have to do, but that's what's coming.
Thank you. Mrs. Kowalski?
Thank you. Yeah, my attitude is, as far as Common Core, is not to take the passive approach, that that's what's coming, so we just, we just have to passively kind of get rid of, go along. I believe we need to use our mind, our wits, and decide, is this good or is it bad? What the responsible use of technology. And President Barack Obama, as I said, in his Race to the Top initiative, is, has pushed Common Core, has pushed the assessments that go along with it, which require this extremely expensive technology. I think it's a way to corporate welfare into the pockets of international corporations. It's a boondoggle. That's why we can't get teacher step increases. But let me just tell you what's happening with technology. Seven thousand dollars apiece for a Promethean board, some kind of huge, it looks like a small pool table, sitting in the corners in our schools, gathering dust. One for every kindergarten class, one for every first-grade class. They could have bought one. It's got rollers, for goodness sakes. They could have bought one and rode it from class to class, never had to spend $56,000 per school for this. That's why we don't have kindergarten assistants. People, adults, teach kids. I love technology, but they don't teach kids. People teach kids. We need to look out for our teachers, first of all. They teach respect, responsibility, taking turns, social behavior, all sorts of things.
Thank you. Mr. Lord?
Technology's here. Technology's here to stay. I mean, there are always improvements. It's always going to come in more. I need to, I mean, they invented the wheel. Now it's on every single vehicle out there. You know, that's technology. I mean, if you look in your pocket, most people carry a smartphone, which is basically, from what Virginia just said, will be in the schools every day. You know, computers take more and more of our lives. So this is what I think they're talking about, believe it or not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nason?
As to technology, it's been around since the first caveman struck flint to create fire the second time. So it isn't exactly new. Technology doesn't scare me. What does is this, devices. Can you explain what, here's your question. Can you explain what these devices are? I mean, an iPad isn't exactly ominous, okay? A computer is not exactly ominous. But if we're looking at the, at the Common Core structure collecting 400 data points, including heartbeat, blood pressure, that sort of thing, on school kids, yeah, I think I'd be very leery of devices. But since I don't know, I can't say much more.
Thank you. Mr. Roonik?
Can you read your question again, please?
We have heard that through implementation of the Common Core, our students will be given devices in the classroom. Can you please explain your understanding of these devices and what purpose they will serve within the classroom?
Thank you. I believe the term "devices" is a key term in that if it was a computer or a tablet, that certainly could have been in that question. It was not. I believe the devices we're talking about are data-mining devices, such as specially-designed seats that have sensors in them that will be monitoring your student's posture, monitoring your student's twitches, their fidgetiness, all of these going into a national database record of behavior attitudes of your students. Additionally, there will be cameras that will be placed in rooms that'll be monitoring your children's eye movements, the eye contact, issues like that. Again, more deeper data-mining issues. There also will be wrist-mounted sensors to monitor extraneous movements from your students. What in the world these roles, these sensors have to do with teaching my son, my grandson, three plus three or how to multiply four plus four? It's extreme overreach by the government, and it has no place in the Carroll County school systems. Thank you.
Thank you. This next one is a comment. There's no question, so you want to take another look at that and see if I didn't misinterpret that, and I'll go on. I guess we're starting with Mr. Desper this time. Teacher pay increases. Start over again. Teacher pay increases, is at a disadvantage, not because it's not enough money, but because it goes to administration first. What can you do to eliminate this problem?
Well, I think we need to take a look at the school budget as a whole. There's been some discussion tonight about surplus fund. I think the surplus fund is a good idea. Saving for a rainy day is sound, safe, wise financial management. I know there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of concern, that the school system may be top-heavy as far as the administration goes. That's something that I'm committed to taking a look at. I told Mr. Guthrie in one conversation that I had with him numerous months ago, if elected to the Board, I fully intend to sit down and look at the budget line by line and ask questions and look into why the system spends what it spends, what it does. There are some things there that I'm certain can be cut, but I think that that's something that has to be further investigated and that we need to work together as a team. that has to be further investigated and that we need to work together as a team. As I've said earlier, this isn't just about me or any one member that's on the Board of Education. This is a public school system for all of our students here in Carroll County, and it requires the input and effort and thought of all of us working together collaboratively as a team to figure out how to properly fund our teacher salaries. They need to be a priority, and they are a priority for me. And if elected to the Board, that is one of the things that I'm committed to making sure that we can raise. As I said earlier, it's not something we're going to fix overnight.
Thank you. Mr. Harmony?
Could you repeat that question one more time so everyone can hear it?
Certainly. Teacher pay increases is at a disadvantage, not because it's not enough money, but because it goes to the administration first. What can you do to eliminate this problem?
Well, here's the thing. First of all, you have to have a Board of Education that's willing to do that. We don't have that at this time. There's too much diversity, there's too much unity of thought, not a diversity of ideas. These teachers haven't had raises for six years. They're sitting on a $15.5 million surplus. Why? I asked the same question. Why are they not getting raises? That's a good question. If I was on the Board, they would get raises. What we need to do is we need to do what some of the other school board systems have done. I've been down in Howard County Public School Systems, sat in on their school board meeting with Dr. Fuess. They decided to go to zero-based budget balance. They've saved 10% in every department in the education, and they had enough money to give their teachers raises because they've switched their way of doing their budget. We need to do our budget that way. I do my business budget that way. I have an equine sports medicine practice, the largest in the state. We do our budget with a zero-based budget. The school system needs to do a zero-based budget. It's not working what they're doing now. We need to change it. But the teachers do need their raises. But remember, the Board, the commissioners only give the money to the Board. What the Board does with it is up to the Board. So if they don't fund their teachers' raises, who do we blame for that?
Thank you. Mrs. Harrison?
When Dr. Eckers was superintendent of Carroll County School Board, he was from Howard County, and he started the zero-based budget. When Mr. Guthrie became superintendent, the Board asked Mr. Guthrie to please look at everything, but please stay away from the teachers, cutting the teachers. Mr. Guthrie did that in the last four years. We looked at everything. We have cut over 200 positions, starting with central office. We used to have three assistant superintendents, we have two. We have three directors. One of our directors of high school is leaving this year. We're going to wait a while before we fill that position. We have cut maintenance. We looked at transportation. We cut $1 million, $1.5 million in transportation. We have looked at everything possible not to cut our teachers because the kids are what's important. We have, we look, we're constantly looking, we're constantly trying to come up with how we can save our money because we had the projection that the enrollment was going down, so we needed to be proactive rather than reactive. So we have lost 200 people that can't shop in Carroll County anymore because they don't have the job with the school system.
Thank you. Mrs. Kowalski?
Yes, thank you. I believe that when I see the school board, they always go after the, they seem to me to always go after the little people. They go after the autism programs, they go after the instructional assistance for kindergarten students, they go after the little people, and I'm talking about a superintendent position that pays $185,000. I'm talking about, I just went onto the Board of Ed's website today, this is what I saw. Office of Community and Media Relations has three positions. One position is television manager for CETV. One, why do we need a position for a television manager? This is why we're cutting teacher positions. Another program manager for Community and Media Relations, supervisor of Community and Media Relations. These are all separate positions. What's up with this? What do they do? They do CETV, Carroll Educational Channel 21? Is this what the taxpayers want to pay for? I don't think so. They do an informational calendar? Okay, you can do without my informational calendar, just put all the dates on one sheet of paper and send it to me through email. I don't have to have a calendar if it means you have to hire a position, you know, report card on education on WTTRAM. This is all public relations-type stuff. Office of Business and Community Partnerships, supervisor of community outreach, what is this? You know, we can do a lot more to cut what's happening at central office. A, we're talking about $80,000 positions over there.
Thank you. Mr. Lord?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Teacher pay increases is at a disadvantage, not because that it's not enough money, but because it goes to the administration first. What can you do to eliminate this problem?
Well, actually, I disagree with that statement. You know, to give teachers raises, approximately $5 million a year, you know, we are, $5 million is not going to the administration. That's clear. But we have this $15 million surplus that keeps getting addressed, all these conversations. You know, it is given to the teachers. They are getting bonuses. They've been getting bonuses for a total of three years, which will almost drain the surplus down to nothing. And the surplus is there as a result of our school system being fiscally responsible. We're only talking about 1% to 2% savings that they are putting away every year. You know, and I'm actually impressed by that. I mean, just, let's put it into perspective. You take $350 and you go grocery shopping, and you come home with $3 left. That's exactly what the school system is doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rooney? Mr. Nason? Yep, poor Mr. Nason again.
Thank you.
You're sitting back too far, I can't see you down there.
Sorry about that.
We look a lot alike.
The question has questions of its own inside it. Part of my question to that is, does the administrative staff work under the same teacher's contract as do the teachers? If that's the case, and if that contract calls for the administrative personnel to be receiving bonuses as well, or I should say, step increases, then maybe it's time, given that, according to The Times a few weeks ago, there are 90 people in central office drawing over $100,000 a year, and none of them are classroom teachers. That's a fact. I'm not going to argue with The Times, I'll take it as fact. Should they be getting that kind of money? Are they worth that kind of money? Are they included in the contract? And maybe the next step is to take a look at the contract when it's time to renegotiate and see whether there isn't a better way to restructure the contract so that teachers, the people who are in the classrooms, providing the education, real education that the kids are receiving, get treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rooney?
Thank you. Teachers don't go into teaching for the money. They go into teaching because they love to teach, and they love to teach children. Our greatest resource is our students, but our second-greatest resource is our teachers. But yet somehow they get overlooked come salary increase time. As we've heard here tonight, it's probably about $5 million to fund a teacher increase across the Board. At a recent, I believe it was a school board meeting, Superintendent Guthrie said that in order to fully implement Common Core, that we still need to fund $725,000 for 460 devices here in the county. We also need to fund $180,000 for maintenance of those devices annually, and we also need to hire 43 new, at least 43 new technicians, one for each school, to do the maintenance and implementation of these devices. Right there, we're approaching $4 million. We're a million dollars away from funding one step increase. Another reason to withdraw from Common Core. $4 million right there, there's the increase. Let the teachers get back to doing what they want to do and ask, teach the children and to care for the children, not to adhere to standards of Common Core. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rothschild?
I guess firstly, I just want to say thank you to our teachers because I believe they agreed to the contract not giving them raises so that they wouldn't be taking resources from our kids. So thank you to our teachers. You still need raises, but thank you. Two and a half percent of our budget goes to administration. I'm not sure if that's competitive with other counties, and I think it's certainly something that we should look into. It's actually something I had on my list. We have 800 staff now that are at the top of their, they can't go any higher, they're at the top of their steps. So again, I think it's worth looking into providing incentives perhaps to our more experienced teachers who are near retirement and perhaps lowering costs that way. I did want to say that 90 people, it wasn't 90 people in central office that were making, it was 90 people in the whole school system that were making that. So we need to look for inefficiencies throughout our school system, I think, is the ultimate line here. We need to be as efficient with our dollars as we possibly can, and we need to, I agree, we need to look at our budget line, item by line item, and see where we can decrease spending if we can and make funding our, increase for our teachers a priority.
Thank you. Okay, this will be the last question that we'll go around with, and then we will conclude with a two-minute summary from each candidate. And just a reminder to the audience that if your question was not asked, they will be provided to the candidates to provide a written answer. Okay, I think this one goes to Mr. Harmony. The current Carroll Commissioners have set aside $400,000 in the Educational Opportunity Fund for those that homeschool or send their children to private or religious schools. Do you agree or disagree with the policy of using taxpayer money to subsidize these organizations? Explain.
Well, let me explain one thing first. I want everyone to know that I sat on the Board of Education, the Education Opportunity Fund. I was one of the founders that developed that criteria for that fund, and I now sit on the advisory board for that fund. The Board of Education has an obligation, and that obligation is to make sure every student, every child in this county, has a good education, whether they're private, parochial, or public. Now, the Board of Education for the public schools received $331 million for the system. That comes to about $12,500 per child. The $400,000 that was given to the Educational Opportunity Fund to help some of the homeschoolers that didn't have money to supply them for books came out to be about $80 a child. So we're investing $80 a child to help that child develop and develop into a successful citizen and to be successful in life. So am I willing to invest that? Yes, I am. If my taxpaying money has been used for the public school student, $12,500, I would be glad to give $80 to the private, proqial, or homeschool child. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Harrison?
The issue I have, I don't have an issue with them giving them, except that we haven't been able to give our teachers raises. Our children, the things that we used to give our children, like band uniforms and sports activity, we now have to pay for that. The parents have to pay for that. And if you go to school, just about every school that you go to now in Carroll County has food pantry. Carroll County Public School can use that money. And what, the problem I have with, one of the issues I have with the money is that it's going through the Carroll County Foundation, and you have to pay 1% on that money a year. And that's money that the kid's not getting, is what you have to pay that foundation to handle that money. We used to do a lot of things. We don't have field trips like we used to. It's so many things that we used to do. We have Career in Tech who has kids who are competing, and they have to go out of state to compete. They have to raise money so they can go to those programs where they can compete. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Kowalski?
I would say that, well, we've been told that, or we've heard that, you know, we don't have money for teacher raises, so, you know, the Board of, you know, Ed may be against this $400,000 going. And again, I've talked a great deal about what's causing the lack of money for the teacher salaries, and I wanted to kind of go back and clarify a little bit. Someone else said that there's this $80,000 a year, it's not from central office, it's from people out in this, all over the whole school system. I just talked today to a teacher that's been in there for over 20 years. Over 20 years, she makes nowhere near $80,000, and her step increases stopped after 22 years. So I think we need to be real, I believe this $80,000 a year is people in central office. But to get back to the question about the $400,000, I believe that, you know, when people send their kids to college, they get some kind of a tax credit for the money they spend on that. So why not help out private school families that, otherwise, they're paying twice. They're paying because they want their kid in a private, usually often a Christian school because they have strong religious values. So they're paying for that, scraping together every penny they can oftentimes, and then they have to pay very high taxes for public school. I think it's fundamentally unfair. I would favor a tax credit for that, especially when you've got this extremely confusing Common Core controversy out there, you've got books with the F-word all over them, and Miley Cyrus videos. Let's give families a little bit of a tax credit for private schools.
Thank you. Mr. Lord?
The issue on the $400,000 private school, I agree with Virginia. The school board and our school system has seen major cuts. We cannot give our teachers raises, you know, the band uniforms, there are many things. What this fund actually does is it gives it to the foundation, there's no transparency, there's no way to track the money. It pays for things that parents in public school already have to pay for. So I disagree with the fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nason?
Let me destroy a couple of myths at the start. One, people who send their kids to private schools aren't wealthy. That's a fact. Some may be, a lot aren't. The other myth is that public education is free. It isn't. We're spending $12,500 a year on each kid in public school. That includes team sports, it includes band, it includes a lot of extracurricular activities, doesn't include a lot of things it used to, but it's still there. As far as the homeschoolers are concerned, if you were to ask the public whether helping homeschoolers to buy books for their kids is a good idea or not, I think I'm fairly safe in saying that the response would be favorable. In fact, The Times did exactly that several weeks back, and the response was 53 for, 47 against. The school board is responsible to see that all Carroll County students get quality education. If that includes sports, band, et cetera, it should include sports, band, et cetera, for all students. Virginia does it, we can. It's about time we looked into it.
Thank you. Mr. Rooney?
Thank you. I agree with the Educational Opportunities Fund, that those families with children in charter schools, homeschools, parochial schools, they're taxpayers as well, and they're spending their money that's going towards the funding of the $12,500 per student in Carroll County. The $400,000 ends up being 1% of the entire budget, which funds roughly 25% of the public school-eligible children. We have essentially 26,000-plus students that attend public school, 26,000 of those are private, homeschooled, and charter-schooled students. I don't see where $400,000 compared to $330 million, it's less, it is 1.2% of the entire budget. Is a homeschooled, a charter-schooled, or a parochial school student worth less? worth less than any public school student? I don't think so. The Department of Education-- the Board of Education is responsible for the educational excellence of every student in Carroll County, not just the public school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rothschild?
I feel like this is more a question for commissioners. The Board of Education has no purview over this fund, so I guess I can answer personally how I feel. I agree. We should be looking out for all students in Carroll County, but I think there are ways to do that differently. So, we can allow our homeschool students to use our resources. We'd have to address some issues with the state to make that happen, but it could be done. Then, we could be working together. If students are getting books from the Educational Opportunities Fund, I think it was Commissioner Howard who recommended that the libraries be in charge of this, and that the books would go to the library, and so the homeschool students could get them to and from the library, and they would still be community resources. So, I feel like there's ways that we can do this, that we can work together with our students, no matter where they come from. But I'm not sure that the Educational Opportunities Fund, the way that it's set up right now, does that.
Thank you. Mr. Desper?
I agree in large part with Mrs. Rothschild's comments again. This is a question, I think, that's more appropriate for the candidates that are running for county commissioner, as it's a funding question, a funding issue for the county commissioners. In principle, I am not opposed to the idea of an Educational Opportunity Fund. However, in the current economic climate, the current budget climate that we have, I don't think it is wise to fund it. And so, I would not, if I were serving on the county commission, I would not be in favor of funding that fund at this time. Now, that's not to say if the budget wasn't as tight as it is. I mean, certainly if there's plenty of money to go around, I think it's a worthy cause to receive funding. But I don't think with as contentious as the budget discussions have been between the school system and our current county commissioners these last several years, that it's an appropriate use of funds. I think it is taking away from our public school system. This is a topic I've thought a lot about, and, you know, there's-- across the IRS building in DC is inscribed taxes of the price we pay for civilized society. And a public education, a free public education, is one of the rights and guarantees that we have as Americans in this country, and it's something that we need to see as properly funded.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the question part. Mrs. Harrison, we'll start with you for a two-minute summary.
Okay. I think the greatest gift that we can give our children is a quality education. Every child that I see, I see is my child. I know the fight that I had to put up to get my kids a quality education, and I'm on this board to fight for all of our children. We talked about how much we spend on each child. We can't do that. We have kids in our school system that have special needs, and we don't spend twelve thousand dollars a year on that. We spend thirty thousand dollars on them a year. We have kids with special needs that we have to take to other counties to be educated. And I think we, as a board, are the greatest gift we can give to our community and ourselves is a quality education, the best education possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Kowalski?
Yes, thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. Thank you to the patient audience. And it really is a privilege to live in this country and be able to run for public office. And I strongly encourage anyone out there with the inclination to do so. And I also want people to know that how-- you have tremendous impact just by coming to a meeting, attending a meeting and voicing your concerns. Don't ever think that you don't. You really, really do. I don't know. We've talked about a lot of really interesting and good issues. I guess the only thing in closing is I think that term limits are extremely important. As I said, we have somebody sitting on the Board of Ed with twenty years there, and I think that right there explains so many-- there's your problem. There's your problem. Twenty years on the Board of Ed. Too long. I want to say that, you know, a lot of people wonder when they go into the voting booth, who do I vote for? I'm going to share my opinion. If you see an "I" next to their name, my opinion is don't vote for them. It means they're an incumbent. Once they've been in, you know, four years, eight years, they really need to go, and it's not happening. So, many of our problems are due to the need for term limits. I will work hard for-- I will advocate for term limits. I helped get them for the county commissioners, and I will get them if elected. And even if not elected, I'm going to push for term limits for the Board of Ed. We need respect for our teachers. They work hard day in and day out. We need to stop the corporate welfare that I think the Common Core is part of it. I think it's an extremely confusing issue. There are a lot of good things about it, but at the root of it is a lot of waste. And, gosh, what else can I say? You know, we can't even get a little walkie-talkie out on the playground for people watching children because they say they don't have money for it. There's too much waste.
Thank you. Mr. Lord?
Thank you. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters, Carroll County Times, the Carroll Media Center, and actually, I would like to thank all the candidates for answering all these questions. Wonderful to hear this. In closing, I'd like to say I'm here because I'm a parent, not a politician. And as a parent, I'm active in the Carroll County Public Schools in just about every way a parent can be. Running for the Board of Education is the next logical step in the work that I've been doing. The Carroll County Board of Education race is nonpartisan for a reason. This isn't about Democrats versus Republicans or liberals versus conservatives. This is about all the stakeholders in our quality education system. This is about our students, our families, and our communities. Our schools need to run like a business and love like a family. We are not producing widgets or a product. We are educating students. We're all seeking what is best for our children and our county. I value the public's input. I want to hear from you, and I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nason?
Last week, U.S. News and World Report released its rankings of public high schools. Of Maryland's two hundred and forty-four high schools, Carroll's best was Winters Mill at number thirty. Our next highest were Century at seventy-nine, Key at one hundred and twelve, Gateway at one hundred and twenty, and Liberty at one hundred and fifty-two out of two hundred and forty-four schools in the state. So, is our school system really as good as we've been led to believe? Maybe. Maybe not, but we can do better. School is like building a house. You start with a solid foundation, and then you add the roof. Just the same way, learning starts with and builds on the basics. Only then can we advance, improve, and get better at what we're doing. We hear a lot of talk about global this and global that, but we live here. We go to work here. We go to church here. We raise our families here. We teach our children right from wrong here. We're their moral compass. We help them form their character here. We want to help them learn and want to learn and enjoy learning. Their classroom teachers, standing in loco parentis, help build their knowledge base and develop their skills. Everyone and everything else either helps or hinders that process. That includes Common Core. Clearly, Common Core has a long way to go before it's ready for prime time. Something like seventy-five percent of the public opposes Common Core, and I think I know why. At its own core, it's hollow. It focuses on data, not teaching. But learning is about lessons, not merely data. The joy of learning and of teaching for us surpasses the merely utilitarian. Come election day, it's your chance. Vote wisely.
Thank you. Mr. Roenig?
Thank you. We all know or have read about someone who has been impacted by the school system's budgetary difficulties. But the bottom line is this. Teachers are unhappy and leaving our school systems. Students are unhappy and frustrated, and many result in being placed in home schools, parochial schools, and charter schools. Parents are frustrated and concerned over their children's educations like never before. We were told in the Facility Utilization Report that young families are actually leaving our district. But tonight, we've touched on many subjects, but there appear to be a common theme, and that is money. I've talked about ways we could save millions, about by avoiding the mistakes of the past, perhaps not completely funding Charles Carroll just yet, but taking half of that money and setting aside for a rainy day fund for the school, using the other half to fund a step increase. Withdrawing from Common Core is yet another. So, how about this for a possible solution? We withdraw from Common Core and allow the teachers to return what they do, what is best, and that is caring for the individual needs of each of our students and to use the God-given talents that they have spent their entire professional development careers developing. This would lead to a slowing and possibly even a reversal of the exodus of young families from our county, and also resort in other young families coming to Carroll County to avoid the ravages that they're seeing from Carroll County in their counties in which they currently live. The result of this Common Core free education would result in an influx of teachers and younger families back to Carroll County, which would stimulate our economy by the purchase of new homes, food, clothes, et cetera, for their families, resulting in a much more vibrant economy for all of Carroll County, which would lead to job opportunities again for our graduates as well as our families here in Carroll County. Best of all, peace of mind returns to the parents, knowing that they have done what is best for their children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rothschild?
Again, I would like to thank our host and everyone who has come out in this rainy evening. I also must note, because it is the question that I am asked the most, that I am not related to Commissioner Richard Rothschild. We should be proud of our school systems. You know, we've spent a lot of time dissecting what's wrong, but we have an incredible school system. Our students are excelling. If you walk in, you can see. You can see the teachers being innovative, and it's just-- it's amazing what is happening at our schools. We are at a turning point in this county. We can either choose to use our declining enrollments and implementation of Common Core as an excuse to underfund and underserve our students, or we can recognize the benefits to all citizens of having a strong public education system and elect Board of Education candidates like me, who will work to improve upon the incredible school system we already have. I support local control of our schools, and I strongly believe our limited resources are best used helping our students, providing opportunities for dedicated and talented teachers, and communicating better with our parents, not fighting state mandates. Board of Education members should understand and actively participate in our school system, as I do. My involvement in our school system, along with my desire to continue to advocate for our students, our parents, our teachers, and our community, make me an ideal Board of Education member. As a board member, I will strive to prioritize the needs of our school system and work to ensure efficiency throughout. But most importantly, I will make the success of each and every one of our students my ultimate goal. I ask that you cast your vote for me, Devin Rothschild, in the upcoming election. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Desper?
Thank you to our host this evening and for all of you who have attended and have watched these proceedings by television and on the Internet. I am an involved father of four children who attend our schools and will for many years to come, and I think it's very important that our Board of Education be made up of parents who have children in the school system. My children come home every night from school, and around the dinner table, I hear about the issues that are going on in their classroom. There's a lot of value to that, and I think that's important for a board member to have. Maryland has consistently ranked as the best public school system in the country for the last few years, and our school system here consistently ranks near the top of the best school systems in the state. So, I brag to my friends and family that live outside of Maryland and Carroll County that we have one of the best school systems in the entire country here in Carroll County, and that's something to be proud of, and I want to help continue that. I support local involvement. You'll find me, as you get to know me, to be someone who is personable and approachable. I have an open-door policy. This is a team effort. I want to hear from our students, from our parents, from our staff in our schools, and from our local community. You can call me. You can email me. One of the negative comments that I hear people make about lawyers a lot, if you've ever worked with a lawyer, you'll hear, well, my lawyer never calls me back. I'm not that type of lawyer. If you contact me, you will get a response from me. I often answer my own phone. I have an assistant at my office, and people are surprised sometimes when I pick up the phone, and they say, why are you answering your own phone? I'm here to serve people, and I want to serve our children. I'm passionate about education, and I love and concerned about our children and want to pursue what's in their best interest. They are our future. We need to remember that. I joke with my clients when they come in for estate planning, we need to be mindful of how we treat our children because they will pick our nursing homes one day.
Thank you. Mr. Harmoni?
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters also for having us tonight. And this Board of Education, the Carroll County Public School System, has failed the teachers, parents, taxpayers, but most importantly, it's failed the children of Carroll County. The Board of Education is a victim of its own mismanagement that has led to increased costs to taxpayers. For example, the incompetent decision to build Manchester Valley High School for eighty-two million dollars that now sits forty-five percent vacant. Enrollment has been declining since 2006 and will continue to decline until 2023. This Board of Education has not put any plan into effect to bring costs in line with declining enrollment or reversing the trend. False alert now messages are put out, mistating that funding was cut twenty-four million dollars over six years, when in fact, I looked at the figures myself, the funding has increased twenty-two million dollars over six years. Our teachers have not received a raise in six years, and we have the lowest-paid starting teacher salaries in the state. This Board of Education and CCEA is sitting on a fifteen-point-five-million-dollar surplus. This Board of Education and the Teachers Union will not allow a raise for fear of losing their talking point to bargain for more money for the union. This Board of Education have all voted to affirm their support for Common Core and allow the federal government takeover of our children's education. They are willing to squander the taxpayers' money by spending large sums of it on curriculum that is unproven. This is a national-- there is a national movement to back out of Common Core. The most recent is Indiana, Tennessee, and Florida. Other pawns that the Board has used are Hoshua Outdoor School and other fine arts programs. They continually threaten the county with having to shut them down, all while sitting on fifteen-point-five-million-dollar surplus. Now is the time for a team on the Board of Education that will listen to the people of Carroll County. It's time to be fiscally responsible, appreciate our teachers by increasing their salaries, and rip Common Core by the roots out of our county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to personally thank the candidates for giving thoughtful responses to the questions. We will make other questions available for you to write your responses, and they will be posted on the Community Media Center. I want to thank Mr. Fritz for being kind enough to sit here for two and a half hours and ask those questions and serve as our moderator. Members of the League and folks in the community, I'm so glad you came out to provide this opportunity for our candidates and our citizens to hear what the candidates are really thinking. I'm particularly grateful to the Community Media Center for all of their supreme efforts. I want to make everybody aware that their Voter's Guide from the League of Women Voters will be available electronically after May eighth, and it's a pretty simple system. You go to vote411.org. I left cards around. I didn't have enough for every seat, but I'm sure that there was one close by to you. You type in your address, and every state and local candidate that you are eligible to vote for will come up. The questions that the folks have entered into that system will be available. You can put them side by side and compare candidates. So, I think it's a really neat system, and you can actually print out your Voter's Guide to take to the polls. Tonight's forum will be broadcast again tomorrow, April thirtieth at seven PM. Additional broadcasts will be May first at nine AM, May second at nine AM, and WTTR fourteen-seventy AM will rebroadcast the program on May eighteenth at ten AM. Thank you so much for coming out. Appreciate your spending our wet, drippy evening here in a dry Community Media Center. spending our wet, drippy evening here in a dry Community Media Center.